McDonald has asked that we do the operating budget first. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald. I believe that he has a couple of slides on the operating budget that he wants to go through. So, we'll be doing item two before item one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items with the operating. We've dealt with, of course, in detail, the operating budget to date. And we just wanted to sort of finalize that portion of it before we move on. Just what we have on there in the first slide is just a reminder in terms of our schedule. The important item there really is that we are hoping that we can finalize the operating budget tonight so we can, in fact, at the next council meeting, pass a bylaw to determine the levies and get the tax notices out. If we are not successful to do that, we do have to provide payments to the region and education. And if our levies haven't been determined, then we can't collect the money, and we've got a problem. So, there is a bit of a time issue relative to the operating budget getting approved. And I would just remind you that the capital budget that we're going to discuss later, regardless of what you approve in the capital budget, it will not affect the operating budget in any way at all. As you know, if you approve those expenditures for the debenture expenditures, they occur in the following year. So, what we have in the '07 operating budget relative to costs for capital is a result of the '06 budget. So, there isn't a relationship in that regard for the '07 budget. So, we can deal with them independently. The next slide, you've seen, I'm just going to show you a couple of quick slides just to bring it back into focus. We've seen these before. And the essence of this slide tells you where we're at right now. And we're at a levy change of 2.6 relative to our budget as a result of the regional tax ratio changes. That affects it minimally. And so, the bottom line on it will be 2.7 percent increase as it is now because of that regional influence. The probably the more important slide is the next one, which really puts the whole package together for the taxpayer. And what it really shows is, it shows the city, again, we're using the 159,000 just as the benchmark assessment. And it shows the 2.72, which includes the regional influence on that. But it also shows the other impacts that would affect the local taxpayer, and particularly region and education. And you can see this. So, the total increase in terms of increase on the levy on an average taxpayer of 159 would actually be 2.24 percent increase when you include the regional costs as well. So, it's our feeling, based on the previous meetings and discussions that we've had, we're in pretty good shape, recognizing that we did take on significant capital costs from '06 that have been included here. We also have, of course, the normal inflationary cost and utility cost, and many of them are much higher than the 3 percent. So, in spite of that, we've been able to bring the budget to this point. And from a staff point of view, we're happy to answer any questions that still might be outstanding in that regard. And we would hope that we would resolve and finalize this operating budget. And, Mr. Chair, we could stop at that point and look for some results to that before. And then, I have several slides I'd like to show on the capital budget.
Sure. I'd like to open it up for discussion. Then, I have Mr. Mayor that would like to speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to say that we should be very proud of the budget before us. I believe it to be a good budget. And as you can see, we're not able only to maintain but also to enhance our level of service at City Hall and while still holding the tax levy at a reasonable rate, accepting something just above or just around the rate of inflation, about 2.7 percent. And while this number just barely keeps up with inflation, it is promising to note that we'll be able to continue an ongoing commitment to our infrastructure, which has been identified as a major priority for our residents and for a number of us around this council table. And even with the additional debt reflected here due to some past capital investments at our community, like the McBain Center and the much-needed upgrades on Dorchester Road, it's significant that we can, at the same time, go after some major community projects this year as well, including further the developments on Dorchester Road, Center Street, Victoria Avenue, and the Bridge Street Project. It's worthy to note that the shift in our priorities to our responsible investment in our city's roads and structures and sewers, I should say. And back seven, eight years ago, we were spending anywhere from three to four million on infrastructure operations. And in recent years, as you know, we've increased the city's investment, highlighted by this year's endowment of more than $12 million in this area. And beyond our efforts in the Municipal Works Department, we see in this budget the beginning of our investment in the development of the city's new floor pad arena. And this reflects our commitment to enhance the level of service and quality of life here in Niagara Falls. In this budget, our commitment to fire services in Niagara Falls is very clear with the completion of Station Six and the upgrading of the fleet to include a new aerial rescue truck along with the completion of the hiring of 27 new firefighters over the past three years. And we are dedicated to keeping quality fire services a priority. And our responsibility to the community to be environmentally accountable is reflected in the completion of the money-run-through project, which addresses the need to reduce sewage discharge into the Niagara River. And we'll go a long way towards cleaning up our water. As well, the work we're doing on the Bridge Street Project to reduce basement flooding in the avenues will have significant local environmental impact for our residents as well. And, Mr. Chair, as well, our budget reflects our promise to reach out and to be involved in the community with a considerable level of support for our hospital. It is a substantial point that we can enhance services, provide funds for these major accomplishments throughout the city, and while holding our tax levy at a reasonable amount. And I commend the staff for their diligence and effort in preparing the budget before us. And residents have said they want us, they want and need these community services as well. We are being responsible by addressing their priorities. And by accepting this budget, we are doing the right thing for the people of Niagara Falls. So, we're making investments in our community that will provide long-term value for the city of Niagara Falls as well. And, Mr. Chair, I support this budget. And when you're all prepared to take a motion, I'd be glad to make a motion with respect to the general purposes budget for 2007.
I'll take your motion now.
So, I'd make a motion, and, Mr. Chair, that this council approves the operating budget, the general purposes budget for 2007.
Okay. I have a motion by Mayor Salsis. I can invite Councilor Iannone. Do I have any other councilors that wish to speak? Counselor Thompson.
First of all, I'll start off on a positive note and amend the staff for the effort that they put forward in the preparation of the documentation. I don't think I've seen as much material provided in the past, and I think that that is commendable. As I went through this book, and I always say line by line, and unfortunately, I did, and it's taken a substantial amount of time, I'm really concerned about, as I go through this, the lack of reserves, the depletion of the reserves that I see. I was very interested in the BMA report, which set out, I think, guidelines for the municipality, which would be good for any business or any municipality, and the debt that we'll probably get into a little later, which won't affect the budget this year or more. But the debt, when you start talking, and I wish I had to have these documents in the last day or two, but when you start looking at a debt in 2012 of almost $70 million, I think we have to be very concerned about that. And that was also mentioned in the BMA report. I have been dealing for some time, and there's been information that has been submitted to the city. And I think Mr. Burton and others, Mr. Dulevick, have been working on the sewer and water rates. I think that there's some real concern with respect to the sewer and water rates. I've heard in the past where they were going to be reduced. They certainly haven't been reduced, and I don't anticipate that they will. But the sewer and water rates and the formula that is utilized, Mr. Malowski, who is probably calling most of the people around the table here, is a very analytical individual. And I was unaware, even though I've been around for a long time, that the formula that is used is probably different with every municipality in the region. And that's why you get people calling up and saying, "How come so-and-so has such an insignificant sewer and water bill compared to Niagara Falls?" Well, it comes down to the formula that is utilized. And I think that we have to come and deal aggressively with this issue as soon as possible. I was hoping it would be dealt with before we deal with our budgets. But when you deal with large users, such as a casino, that is paying substantially less per cubic gallon or cubic foot of water than local individuals living in their residential homes, I think that's something that should be of concern and alarming to us. I think that the 2.7 is something that is close to inflation. I'd ask, Mr. Harrison, what is the inflationary rate at this year and what was it last year?
I don't know exactly the inflationary rate. It's around a 3 percent.
Last year was 1.9. So, this year, what is it?
Certainly, there's been pressure on this year because of fuel and oil prices, but I don't have that figure right in front of me.
Mr. Chair, just to that point, Corey LaRocque is just before he goes. He has it on his computer at 2.3 percent, I believe.
2.3 percent at this point? Yeah. Of course, that's because of oil and gas, for sure. That's the situation. Anyway, I'm concerned about the people who have called me. I've had one person call me and say that they weren't worried about the increase in the budget this year. This person is certainly a person of means and certainly didn't have any concern about paying more taxes. But most people don't want to have a zero budget. They already think they're paying too much now, and that the budget that's being presented here is excessive to a lot of people who are on fixed incomes. And particularly with the sewer and water rates, the gas prices, and everything else they're paying, they are very concerned about having another increase. And, you know, 159,000 assessment, and we're paying $53.61. In my opinion, that is not insignificant. I like the way, I like the method of, for me to go through this budget, and I've got all kinds of things marked, from contracting out to, we haven't had a report back on the legal services yet. What we're going to do with respect to that, whether there's going to be some tendering out, whether we're going to hire another solicitor, we haven't decided what we're going to do. There is $470,000, I believe, in contracting out for legal services last year, and we had two solicitors. So, I don't know. I think that's something that is of concern and something that we should be looking at. I have a question with respect to the casino assessment. Is that been satisfied as yet? Do we have an answer on that? I recall when we were supposed to be getting $10 million more from the casino, and all of a sudden, we end up having a challenge and a possible reduction. Has that been satisfied, that, Ms. Chair?
No, it hasn't. We're still dealing with the O.G. on that. We've had discussions as recent as yesterday on it, and we're attempting to resolve it. And it's an extremely important point because we're not only dealing with current assessment, but we're dealing with the challenge from '03. And in fact, they were successful, and we had to pay a significant amount of money. It's worth millions to us. So, we are attempting to negotiate it, and it's certainly an area of concern, and it's a high priority for staff in terms of our negotiations right now to resolve this.
Okay. And where do we stand with the Parks Commission, who also challenges their assessment?
We did resolve that, and we are and have been collecting funds from Parks. We did resolve that.
Has that been stabilized? Are they paying more? Is it a fixed rate?
It was stabilized at their past rate with an inflationary factor built in. So, we will see increases based on inflation.
Okay. Was it reduced from what it was before?
No.
All right. Anyway, I think next year, hopefully, we're going to get back into the routine, and it couldn't have been done this year anyway with the election. But hopefully, we can start the budget process in September and get it finished by the end of the year. So, we have a fiscal plan for the year rather than this situation where we're always trying to play catch-up. I personally would have, the assessment increase this year is, what, $500,000?
The actual assessment growth this year is $91 million, which turned into tax-related new revenues of $530,000 a month.
You've got a tax freeze, but you have new...
Well, that's, yeah, the assessment is actually assessment growth. That means that's new homes, new commercial properties, et cetera, et cetera, like that.
All right. Mr. McDonald, how do you plan to go through this at all? Or is everybody just going to say, "Oh, this is great," and pass this budget?
I wouldn't suggest, Mr. Chair, that we would say it's great. But we do believe that, based on the amount of detail as pointed out by yourself and the time that's been available for review, that from a staff point of view, we're very comfortable with this budget, and we would look for a positive motion tonight to actually approve this operating budget this evening.
All right. I'll let somebody else have the opportunity, and I have some questions on the floor.
Well, thanks, Councilor Thompson. And just a couple of comments in regards to the reserves. I believe that we did talk a couple of months ago about stopping using the reserves and finance that brought to us some different tax policies that we'll look at implementing. I think one of your other concerns was the debt. And I guess in terms of the debt, it's difficult to have it both ways. I mean, council unanimously supported our last capital project, which was, you know, an expenditure of almost $35 million. So, we can't complain that we're getting into more debt and then unanimously support projects.
Well, excuse me. I know if you approve a project, you have to pay for it. But you also have to, like anybody in a household, if you make a certain amount of money, you have to try to live within your means. If you want to buy a car and you can afford a Chevy, you don't go out and buy a couple Cadillacs. And I think we're getting to that point. You tailor your budget to the amount of income that you have coming in. And obviously, that's not what we're doing, and the debt is escalating to the part where it's going to be a problem. $70 million debt is not going to be our problem. It's going to be somebody else's problem.
Okay. Do I have any other councilors that wish to speak? Counselor DiOglio, I don't think, Counselor Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend staff. I think it's a great budget, and I'm very happy with it. It's the exact direction that we gave to staff. I came in at around the boat where we expected and hoped that it would. I'm satisfied. I think it's fair. As a matter of fact, I was, I cut out another publication, a number of rates of increase of the GTA. And I was happy to say that out of 28 quoted budget increases, not one of them was better than ours. We've got a lower increase than any of the 28 around the GTA. And as a matter of fact, I understand some in the region are more than triple of what ours is. And considering we're all suffering, it's been a challenging time with, as we saw on Monday, the loss of manufacturing, a lot of tourist challenges. I think considering the fact that we're investing heavily in ourselves, we've done without for a long time, it's nice that we're in a position that we can reap some of the benefits and enjoy. I believe our best times are yet to come, and I'm very happy, and I certainly will satisfy, or I will vote in favor of this budget.
Thank you, Senator. That's Counselor Ring.
Thank you. I, too, was very pleased with how comprehensive this was. I think I've been asking for that about as long as I've been on council, and I know Alderman Orr used to ask for it as well. We finally got it. It was a lot to go through, but it really shows you why there is so little wiggle room with the operating budget. I have, I'm prepared to support it. I just have a couple of things I'd like to question and probably amend. One of them is the Child Advocacy Center. And normally, I don't support giving to agencies outside of Niagara Falls, but this is being set up for all of the children of the Niagara region. And unfortunately, it's going to include some of our own as clients. They're asking for $1,500 from us. I know little tell them they've managed to find it in their hearts to give. You know, this is for children who've been sexually abused so that they won't be put through the wringer time and again telling their story over and over and over, different, you know, times, dates, places, and all sorts of, it can all take place under one roof. I know from what the information they sent us, with these sort of centers, the likelihood of conviction of offenders goes up enormously. And the trauma that these children go through, as a result of having to retell their stories over and over again, goes down significantly as well. And, you know, $1,500 in the overall budget is such a little amount, and yet it can make such a huge difference to these kids. You know, I just, unfortunately, you know, some of our community's children are going to go through there as well. And I think anything we can do to help them out, and, you know, this $5,000 could be the best, spend $1,500 we passed tonight. So, I will move an amendment that we put it back in.
Okay. Yeah. And would you like to just simply ask the mover of the motion if they would consider?
Certainly.
An amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'm ready.
Okay. Chair? Yes?
Okay. And my other one also deals with a permissive grant, and it's an issue of fairness. I looked at, and this is right at the beginning, just in front of tab two. I mean, you look at the community organizations that we give grants to to support what they do, and most of them are either holding the line, increasing very minimally, or there's a few that are absolutely decreasing their request of us this year, which is wonderful, and I commend those. The one that concerned me was the art gallery, which was a new item last year. We had never, ever given them money before. All of a sudden, last year, $18,000 went to them, and now they're increasing that to $56,000. Like, that's a 300 percent increase overnight, whereas everybody else was, we've been supporting all these years, and they really rely on us, is just holding the line, decreasing in some cases. Is there a reason that we're looking at giving them almost 300 percent more?
Sure. I'll have Ms. Marcy address that, please.
I have a chair. Consistent with our strategic plan, there was a huge emphasis placed on the need to invest in our cultural community. So, what happened is the Niagara Falls, the gallery's always been considered a very strategic partner. Through their business plan, they put together their grant application, piggybacking on many of the projects and, I guess we'd say, the deficiencies in the delivery of arts programs in our community. As staff, we saw them as a very organized resource, an organization that could deliver those services. Do acknowledge that this is a one-time investment, that's a larger investment than the $18,000 of last year. Staff felt, though, that having that organization deliver many of the services that we're currently not seeing in our community is identified in our strat plan and identified through other community partners was a very good investment. We would evaluate it, obviously, to see if they met, similar to our other partners, those deliverables, and evaluating whether additional funding in future years would be warranted. So, we felt that that was a good investment. However, if you felt that that level of percentage increase wasn't warranted, we could certainly work with the gallery in terms of tailoring back with them some of the programs and new initiatives that they wanted to introduce in our community for this year.
Counselor Ring.
I'm still not comfortable with that much of an increase when the others are holding the line, increasing it very, very minimally or decreasing.
Okay. Thank you. I have Counselor Iannone who'd just speak.
Thank you. Just to that point, I don't know if Alderman Wing has a, well, she doesn't yet have a child, but's getting up to the school age again where they're going to revisit this. But I know that that museum caters to almost every school in the city. My son just did a class trip there where they spent a day learning arts and culture. That program's been spilled back drastically in school. You know, I went the first time with them. This time, it was a half-day. This time's a whole day. It is really servicing all the kids in the area. And while it doesn't sound as drastic as a sexual assault center, it fills, I think, a different void that they cannot, or no, they're not doing anymore in the public schools. So, I'm not as concerned at a one-time grant. We've watched our groups come before us and ask for increases before. But just so everybody knows, that is being utilized now by the public schools almost on a daily basis. So, it is in constant use.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have any other councilors that wish to make a comment? If not, there is a motion on the floor with an amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried with Counselor Thompson and Fisher opposed. We'll move on to our second item, which is the 2007 capital budget discussion. And once again, I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald, who I believe has a slide presentation.
I have several slides, and what I'm going to attempt to do is just to provide a bit of an overview and focus in on some of the key projects. What we have here first, of course, is just a reminder, we received the budget on the seventh. Hopefully, everybody got the amendments that we handed out a couple of days ago. And just a reminder again, because we are so late, as Counselor Thompson mentioned, due to this year, we need to finalize our debt requests for '07 by June the fourth to the region. So, there's a bit of a time issue at this point. The next slide gives an idea of our broad spending, capital spending. We're going to get into a minute into probably the more significant slide relative to debenturing. But this gives you an idea of where we're at with the actual expenses. And you can see, we have a total expenditures in capital of over $46 million in '07. And you'll see when we flip to debentures, it's a different number. And the importance of this slide is to give you an idea, the amount of money we're spending on capital expenditures. And we do have other sources of income to help pay for that, of course, other than debenturing. And a high, of course, in '08 of $61 million. That's broken down, of course, all of this into various departments, and we're going to touch a little bit on that as we go through this. This slide really is a bit of that summary, but now we're moving into debentures. And this is really our biggest concern with the capital budget because, other than debentures, we have development charges, we have reserves to, and of course, the operating contributions from the operating budget to help pay for this. What you can see here in '07 is that we are recommending a budget that would only require $2.8 million in debentures for '07. And again, as I mentioned earlier, that would not have to be picked up in the operating budget until '08. And across the board, we hit a high, of course, in 2010, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. That's really when we look at our arena cost, which is the largest one-time capital expenditure that we have. I can remind you, we're going to have it open in '09, but we don't begin the debentures till '10. So, that's a bit of a summary of what departments and what we're looking at over the five years. That's in fact, a summary of the whole budget. The next slide, and I'm going to focus quickly into each section to give you an idea how we break that 2.8 particularly, and I am focused particularly on '07, but we'll speak to any item in the five-year budget. Within the '07 year of the 2.8, 1.9, in fact, is allocated to fire. And that's because of commitments that were made in the past as well. And you can see where the large items are, two largest being the aerial truck. And this is the second year, really, of that truck, and that will be delivered this year. And as you know, we usually have to order that a significant amount of time in advance. We really were spending approximately $1.3 million on that vehicle. And the other big expenditure on that page, of course, is the Station Six and the work we did there. And that $800,000 is part of the $1.4 million that we had approved the past year, and this will finalize that expense. So, this is a big year for fire because of those key issues that we're currently dealing with. On the next slide, we're moving to Public Works. And again, as we all know, Public Works is our largest operating department, and it shows only $200,000 of debenture going forward for '07. They are spending approximately $35 million in terms of total expenditures in the capital budget, but we only need to debenture $200,000 because of the other sources of funding that we have. Key projects listed there, and you can see from the largest being down near the bottom with the rail separation, the road separation that we've talked about for quite some time. The EA is not finished yet, and in the estimates that we have at this point, we could be talking as much as $7 million for that cost. But again, I remind you that this is a five-year budget, and you make a decision on a five-year vision, but the only real commitments are in '07. Anything beyond '07, you will get another chance to adjust the budget going forward, to change or amend or whatever in future budget years. So, while you approve the full spending, it's really the '07 So while you approve the full spending, it's really the '07 that we're focused in on right now. And so our largest department is really one of the smallest expenditures. The next item in terms of parking and traffic, there's really no debenturing to be done in parking and traffic this year. We will look at several items totaling over five hundred thousand in '08. Niagara Falls Transit, we're looking at four hundred and thirty thousand. This is for two vehicles that we purchased and for approximately, actually our total cost is over a million thirty-five thousand for those vehicles. And we're using the gas tax is helping us out to almost five hundred thousand dollars and we also have development charges to help offset that cost. So in almost all cases with major expenditures, there are other sources and the one we try to avoid most, of course, is the debenturing because the carrying cost comes back on us with the, in the operating budget. And parking rec, as we mentioned, is a significant area going forward. In '07, however, it's only two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and that's for the chipper roof. And in fact, there's a report going to council next Monday on that specific item and we'll be dealing with that, the details of that at that time. Obviously, there's two large items in this one going forward over the next few years. The biggest is in two thousand and ten, as I mentioned, twenty-nine-five, and that's obviously the arena complex. The other large item down the line there a little bit with the Boys and Girls Club, we'll be dealing with the details of that actually again at our next council meeting, not next Monday, I'm sorry, the following Monday. And we've allocated the five million dollars that they've requested in that budget and of course, we're speculating on when that money would be required and we felt it was important to identify it within the budget. You'll get a chance to discuss it in two weeks and then we will modify when the money is required based on the success of that project going forward. But I know it was important to have it listed there. The next item again with museums, there's nothing in '07 and we're looking ahead to '08 for some spending in that regard. The next item is the downtown SIP and as you can see that there's no additional monies to be spent in '07. We will be dealing with that item in some detail over the next period of time. And again, as I mentioned, for those counselors that are wondering, even though assuming for a moment we approve the capital budget as it is there, there's no money to be spent in '07 and you'll get a chance later to decide how much you want to leave in that going forward. The report will be coming in in some detail. What we've concluded here is roughly the twelve million dollars that council has discussed in the past. That's a quick, quick summary of the sort of the key projects and all those details are in your binder, but I want to just put it in a larger perspective for a couple of minutes with these slides. And we talk about this a lot. This is really talking about the percent of debt we take on relative to the provincial standards that are based on our own source revenue. And as you can see here, the top red line is twenty-five percent mark in the province tells us we cannot go over twenty-five percent. We've established our own guideline at fifteen percent. And what you see here, the net to two lines at the bottom, the next one is the municipal average, the purple colored line. And you can see the municipal average is just under four percent and we're pretty tight with that municipal average up until we leave '09 and then we begin to increase from that point. When we hit '09, we go up to approximately four point three six. And when you hit a high point, well in '11, we hit about just over eight percent and we go to eight point two in twelve. And so it just gives you an idea why, there's no question, there's a significant change in how much our budget changes relative to from operating to the debt, but when you look at it in perspective to where our guidelines are and where other communities are, it's the view while still not as good as we've had it before, it's still in a comfortable range. The next slide talks about, shows you the jump relative to the actual numbers in the debt. And we go from '06 where we have a debt of approximately thirty-two million dollars to the high point on this would be in '10 when we hit seventy-six million dollars. And again, that's based on the, some significant investment in infrastructure and I mentioned a few minutes ago, things like the bridge overpass, if we end up with the grade separation, that's a seven million dollar item. Are you talking a lot of other infrastructure as well as of course, the arena project? And again, I keep emphasizing that these are issues that you'll decide on one at a time when they come forward, but it is a significant change in the debt situation. The next slide gives an idea of what it's going to cost us as our operating budget because we approved the debt and then we have to pick up the carrying costs. And this chart, this line follows the same pattern, of course, as the one to four. And our cost in '06 were approximately one point nine million dollars and they've been that way for the last couple of years. Will go to '07 to just over four million dollars. And the high point again is in '11. I mentioned the expense for the arena will be in two thousand and ten, but we don't actually pick up the debenture and begin paying the debt until two thousand and eleven when our carrying cost, the debt payment would be required to be approximately ten point seven million dollars. The next slide, however, just reminds us that while we owe, we'll have a requirement if we did everything in this capital budget and of course, that's pretty unlikely to happen, we would owe approximately ten point seven million. The line on the bottom is just shows that we have other non-tax funding to help us with the debt. And this is really, it's just approximately two million dollars, whilst no, it's actually approximately one point four three million dollars. And that's money that we talked about when we dealt with the arena, both from the agreement that is very close to being finalized and coming to council with Walker Industries, the annual amount we'll get from Walker Industries and the net savings because of the new arena operation. So we just wanted to show it on there, that will bring that blue line down relative to impact on the levy. But we'll still owe the money, but we'll have a source of help with that. Mr. Chair, that's just a quick summary. We hope that any of the department heads would be happy to answer details on it. I remind you again that our main focus is on the '07 and we're talking just under three million dollars required for debenturing in that particular area. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Anone and Counselor Fisher that will speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not sure where to start with this budget and I know while Mr. McDonald says we're just voting on '07, the minute politically you vote for a five-year capital budget and you take something else out later, it becomes, well, you supported it when you did a five-year capital plan. So, I mean, that's the reality of it, but I'm going to take it to my favorite section right now and we're going to go to the back of the budget, to the downtown SIP money. Now, I'm confused on this one because I'm sure that when this council, this new council, voted for the very first time in regards to money to attest to the CIP, it was based on the long-term plan of up to twenty years. And I know my motion was up to twelve million over twenty years. So I'm a little confused when I read a capital budget that puts in two thousand and eleven, far within that twenty-year plan, with one sixty-two, land building furniture and equipment. First I'll start engineering fees, the eight fifty-eight, three eighty-three. What is that for?
Two thousand and seven.
Yep, two thousand and seven.
Through the chair, as counsel may be aware, there are a number of design projects that were approved for hiring a consultant to carry out the various CAs for the Western Gate or the Eastern Gateway, detailed design work for the underground infrastructure for the street sweeping components. That was part of that one point two million, I believe, that was approved in expenditures. So that's what, that's what a lot of those expenditures are.
So that's already approved?
That's approved, that was approved last year, so that's what they're showing there is a lot of those expenditures and then they're carrying over into this year.
Okay. So when we go across the line, we see two thousand and eight, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that's the same, is it within that one million two? Or is that additional monies?
Just to that point, I believe that figure that we approved was one point six six, a million dollars that was last year on the interim work on the EA and the work that our Director of Public Works was talking about.
Okay, but I'm asking, is the two thousand and eight money, monies we've already approved or the council of the day approved to last year?
Once again, through the chair, we're using the one point six six that was approved previously for a lot of the engineering and soft costs to this point. So those are the expenditures that we're expending and a lot of those engineering design study fees.
Okay, so we're going to go down because I'm going into two thousand and eight because you handed us the five-year capital plan. Under roads, pardon me?
Just trying to understand exactly what it is you're talking about.
Okay, go to two thousand and eight because we are passing a five-year capital plan, correct?
Right.
Yes, one sixty-two. Do you not have the same page I do?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
Under, under two thousand and eight, you have for roads, three million two hundred thousand. That far outshines the one point six six that the mayor says we spent, we or the council voted to allocate. So where is that money and what is that project?
Mr. Chair, I think to summarize this, anything you're looking at from '08 on is on the assumption that at some point in '07, you would approve expenditures up to the twelve million dollars, which we haven't even dealt with yet. So this is on the assumption that that decision is made. If you decide, when we come back with the report on the downtown, which we will shortly, if you decide you don't wish to do that, all of this will be gone.
Mr. McDonald, I'm pretty sure that we said in our discussion, and please anybody around the table who voted for up to twelve million over twenty years, said we aren't spending fourteen million dollars for a parking garage. We didn't care what report you brought back to us. And I don't know anybody else, but when we went door to door and we campaigned, I completely add after add after add that said, we're not spending taxpayers' money to build a parking garage downtown. So why, and I mean, we clearly gave that direction. Why is it in here?
The parking garage is not in there as an expense to the city. You can show it's still unfunded and we would be looking for other sources of funding for that, assuming we had other levels of government chip in. The monies you're talking about in '08 would not include the parking structure.
Okay.
But again, as I mentioned, because we can get in, of course, to the specifics of this, but we assume based on the SIP and the work that's been done, the work is broken down into roads, landscaping, park work and other work and they're spread out accordingly to begin work in '08. If again...
What's the three point two million for roads that you have here in '08? Because our EA isn't back. Are we talking the realignment of River Road?
Mr. Chair, yes, we are, but again, EA is not finished and it's all part of that. But again, we were, this is a totally speculative...
And it shouldn't be in here. It should not be in our capital budget then because these decisions were already made. You've got a decision in here or a projection in here for three point two million to realign a road that the Parks Commission hasn't agreed on and you have a figure in here that has us expropriating people's property, you've lived there eighty years and are going to fight us tooth and nail to do it. I understand now why residents call us and say, what the heck is wrong with you people? You told us this wasn't going to happen. So now tomorrow, we're going to have calls from people down there saying, wait a minute, you're going to expropriate my property? You can't do anything down there unless you expropriate and you don't have that direction from us.
Correct. And there's no intent to expropriate. This is no different than the mention I made to the grade separation.
Well, I have that highlighted during the...
Morrison and Dorchester. And in fact, a lot of the items in the capital budget, '08 and beyond, are making assumptions based on issues that are brought forward. The Boys Club is another one. Final decisions are not made on those items, but we put them in here because they've been up for discussion at council and we're trying to spread them out accordingly, assuming that you would make a decision on it. If you make a decision that doesn't require this money, it never gets spent. This is not a decision, of course, to bore the money or to spend the money, just saying if you decide to do the things that we've been talking about, here's an option in terms of funding it. But this is not a commitment to fund it and this issue of the downtown is no different than a lot of the other items we have in the budget.
I disagree with Mr. McDonald. We've made our points loud and clear on this projected money for the downtown and I won't, you know, I think I demanded a defibrillator when I voted for the operational budget, but I'm not voting for this capital budget if those are still sitting in there because I think they're speculative things that we've already made a decision. It might be your wish list, but we already decided that we weren't going in that direction. So I'm going to go to another point that you just mentioned while on that point. You just made a comment about the rail separation, if we end up with the grade separation. And again, you've got to have residents at home shaking their head at us because we said for safety reasons, according to our EA, according to every other thing, every other portion of that EA that said, put that overpass there, we passed it. I started on that overpass in ninety-eight or ninety-nine when I got here. It's ten years, it's in the budget for two more years and now it's if we do it. I thought we were doing it. I could ask all the time, you passed that rail separation, why isn't it done? We're not waiting for an EA, the EA's complete.
The council hasn't made a determination on the EA and that's still to come for the council. So I appreciate the points that are being made, but the fact is council hasn't made a final decision on expenditure for that grade separation. They haven't made it yet. You're quite right and I mean, what's in here is not a wish list of staff, believe me. It's a reflection of the discussions that have taken place at this council, but again, nothing beyond '08 is committed. This is simply a vision. You can change it whenever you want. If you want to take everything out from '08 and beyond, you're going to deal with it next year. It's just simply a vision as to how we might want to plan ahead the budget, but you make decisions on every one of these issues one at a time.
Well, then I'm going to make a motion in regards to, because I'm not going to support this capital budget as it sits before us because we passed a capital budget with that loss in grade separation on it. You've got residents all through the community thinking we're doing it, now you're saying that money's not committed? When I vote for something in a capital budget, we have to re-vote on it, when I vote for something in a capital budget, I want the residents to think I voted it because I really believe we're having it done. I'm disappointed to see that it's sitting in '09. But when I vote, when I made the motion that we spend up to twelve million over twenty years on the downtown, it wasn't to have speculation that we'll spend fourteen million dollars on money we may get from the government then. I think that the SIP downtown portion of this capital budget was already decided by this council and I'd like to make a motion that we remove this and deal with it at the time when the EA comes in, but not to give the impression that this is anything that we support.
I'll second that.
So just to, just to be clear, Counselor Anone, are you asking to remove the monies for the two thousand and eight downtown SIP and replace them with the rail grade separation on Morrison Street?
No, Mr. Chair. What I'm saying is the council of the day last term vote passed, I think that two thousand and seven and a portion of the two thousand and eight capital projects. With the three point two million that's sitting in here for roads for two thousand and eight, we haven't passed that or approved it, nor do I want to give a resident any assumption that we're going to do that. We've said, I don't even think this before us, this third, to me, this came out of the blue, a number of us have talked amongst ourselves, this portion of the capital budget was out of the blue for me. I thought we dealt with that.
Okay, Mr. McDonald.
Just one clarification on it. I appreciate the comments and I'll just remind the council that grade separation, while it's an item that will probably be supported at some point, the EA is not coming in until June. So you haven't seen it, you haven't made a decision on the EA. And assume it comes in in June and there's some work to be done on it, you wouldn't actually probably end up doing that work until '08 and then you would debenture in '09. So that's why the budget is set up the way it is. So while council may have given strong indication of the support for certain projects and till it's here and you make a final decision on it, it's not decided so. So the process we follow is the same for every one of these projects. If you decide to take an item out, that's fine. Capital budget is just a plan and we haven't made a commitment in terms of, our commitment, we view our commitment as when we go and we debenture and bore the money. That's what we do. Or you agree on a contract that we bring forward to council. Those things haven't happened for any of those items beyond '08 that are new items.
Counselor Anone, just to be clear, then, your motion, because the clerk doesn't understand it yet either, is to take three point two million dollars out of the downtown SIP for two thousand and eight?
I'd like to take anything past the two thousand and seven budget for the downtown SIP is highlighted here, out of this capital budget. We approved two thousand and seven, the rest of it comes out of our capital budget.
Okay. And I have a second there by Counselor Fisher.
And the grade separation, I'll deal with the next issue, but yeah, it's not involved in this motion. But I will say, anybody sitting at home that watches this... in this motion, but I will say, anybody sitting at home that watches us talk about a, a five-year capital budget, believes when we approve it, it's going to get done. If we, as a council, have to move expenditure for that rail separation, which we've dealt with two councils ago, particularly when people started being killed at that railway crossing, we knew that there had to be an overpass there, that it's sitting here not to be dealt with in 2009, I think we mislead the residents when we say we're committed to doing that. So I don't mind making a motion to move that up within the capital budget, but I think this one, it is seriously alarming to most of the residents who we gave a commitment to that we were not spending that money down there.
Mm-hmm, okay. I have a long list of speakers, and what I'll do is I'll go through them and ask them if they wanna speak to this motion first, barring that they don't wanna speak to the motion, I'll still come back to them in order after. So I have Councilor Fisher first, would you like to speak to the motion?
I agree with it.
Councilor Wayne?
Uh, yes, first of all, I have to declare a conflict on page 165, the downtown eastern gateway that deals with the Negro Parks Commission, and also on the River View Park, mentioned on 168. Once, you know, those two come declarations are to the way, I'm fine with the rest. Um, I certainly support the motion. Um, there was a couple of things in here I was concerned about for this year. Um, let me just find them, bear with me, sorry. One of the things we're looking at for this year is an environmental assessment for the Huron Street reopening. Doesn't sound like a big deal, except it's $100,000. I'm sorry, I am not gonna spend $100,000 studying whether or not to reopen Huron. You know, $10,000, that would seem reasonable, $100,000, no way, I can't support that. Um, that, I'll address the rest later, right now I support the motion, I just wanna make those steps right here.
Okay, Councilor Thompson to the motion?
Well, I just, uh, also, uh, after the debate that took place during the election, I find it difficult for, uh, anything to be, in '07, uh, with respect to the downtown, until we, we don't even have a, a proponent at this point, uh, and talking about, uh, the, uh, East Gateway, the West Gateway, and all those, uh, personally, I don't think that's gonna happen, and to have it in the budget, uh, certainly goes contrary, if you vote for the budget, somebody's gonna ask you, "Well, you voted for it here, what, what are you talking about?" That's not what you said before, so I, uh, I think we should wait until we get a proposal, wait till we get the, uh, SIP information, and then we can determine whether we have a, uh, the original proposal that went from, uh, 100,000, or 100 million to 171 million in a week, and, uh, I don't challenge anybody to tell me what the changes are or what it's all about. Uh, I think that's still totally up in the air, and to presuppose any of this, uh, can be considered at this point, I think is, is premature. It may come, there may be something that comes, but, uh, usually you put up a parking structure when you, uh, have a lot of cars that you have to park. I haven't seen them.
Okay, Mayor Salsi?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the passion by, uh, that's being displayed by Councilor Inoni. I think our CAO's comments are exactly correct. Um, I, I can't support the motion, but I wanna say something, if I could. This council approved the 1.66 million dollars, which involved the environmental assessment study and the study that we're conducting as we speak. Um, we also are spending money, as you know, on doing a marketing study, and, uh, we haven't got any idea yet whether we're talking 12 million, 25, 30 million dollars, whatever. And, uh, as you may recall, and reported back to the council, and you were present when we did make a presentation to the Minister of Infrastructure and Public Works at the amendment of Mr. Kaplan at Ama last August, and we said to Mr. Kaplan, we'd come back to him in our request for provincial funding and possibly federal funding with respect to a, a third, third, third proposition. We, uh, we aren't anywhere near that yet, and, uh, what staff is attempting to do is to give this council some idea, uh, if the money were to be 12, and I, I have certainly the distinct impression that this council approved up to 12 million dollars, and it was a sarcastic comment made that even maybe up $1 of the 12 million would be spent. This is at beyond '07, this is the budget we're talking about in '07 for Capital Works. In '08, uh, it may be 12, it may be 5, it may be whatever, I guess it depends what this council will decide. We're not being asked to decide that tonight. So I think the motion is really premature to, to eliminate and remove it. We have to have some idea of where we might be going, just like, uh, our CAO said, we have a request from Boys and Girls Club, we put that in, but we don't know, the information we have is not fully completed yet. Uh, we are all anxious to do the overpass, uh, we did make a, a motion by this council to do the EA, we don't know what the final cost of that, uh, overpass would be yet. So I think staff has just given us a direction, a bit of a roadmap, it's not a wish list by them, let's see, follow up to our direction of, of our staff, to give them some ideas of how they see this money, uh, coming, coming out. I, I think our CAO has qualified it by saying as well, if we do this project, we can think about the timing requirement, and our Director of Public Works will tell us this, if we have our EA completed this year, by the time you get the engineering work done and the contract ready, it's probably next year. And I think I'd like to ask that question, Mr. Doolittle. For you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Through the Chair, uh, yes, on a number of those projects, because the EAs won't be completed till the end of the year, a final design, uh, will start next year, uh, if approved by the council, because the once, if council accepts the EA, uh, it gets through, then the next steps will be hire a consultant, which will again come to council, uh, get the design done, and then we go to, you know, then we go to tender, and again, it'll be up to council to decide yea or nay on, on those, on, on the actual approval of, of the contracts. So there's still a number of steps that have to be done, uh, before the actual expenditure does take place.
Well, thank you, Mr. Doolittle. Mr. Chairman, again, just to reiterate the point, by the time that the venture is made, it's usually the, the following year thereafter, so I think staff is very correct in, in what they were giving, uh, giving us this information. We, as a council, have yet to approve a number of things with regard to those particular projects. So let me say this to the council, I don't want you to prejudge the downtown yet, we don't have the following, uh, we don't have the full information. Um, we have, uh, one proponent standing by, we have other proponents who may look at this project. Um, to me, it's not dead, uh, there are more than one, there's more than one way to raise the, the revenue, as we said, and, uh, we don't know what requirements of the revenue of the city requirements might, might be at this point, not the revenue, but the spending, I should say, and, and depending upon what the spending is, uh, we can determine where we're gonna go for the, for the revenue. So I, I think that correctly so stated, uh, the staff is giving us just a direction, and we're talking about really '07, and we're setting a pace towards a, a five-year plan and program. We did this last year, we had the same type of discussion. So I don't think that by voting for this, uh, five-year plan, we are committing obviously any dollars to any project beyond 2007. Thank you.
Okay, to that point, Councilor Inoni?
Thank you. I, I find it, yeah, I'm so glad we're in a debate situation here, because I find it hysterical that the mayor talks about voting on something with information, because yet you passed 36 million dollars with zero information, you have as little information today from Mr. Lichtman as you had when you passed it almost 15 months ago when he first came to council. We are no farther ahead information-wise than we were today. Don't talk to me about having information when you pass something. There are four of us that ask for information on a weekly basis, Mr. McDonald, I think I touch base with you three times a week, saying, "If you have any other information that can change my mind, can I have it?" As of last week, you still didn't have any. So we're no farther along. I have no problem leaving in the money that the council of the day passed, because those projects are already started, the money's already being spent, they passed those things, including the market study. Anything beyond, the money's already passed for the downtown, is included in my motion to be eliminated, other than what was already pre-approved. I'm sorry the mayor doesn't agree with my motion, but I'm saying, this council knows no more than it did 15 months ago. I think that in itself is alarming. I think looking at putting money into the downtown, following our own CIP plan, I don't care if Heritage Niagara falls out of the sky with a plan tomorrow, as long as we have a solid one, it doesn't matter what everybody else has, and as long as we're following our plan with our motion, that passed unanimously, I might add, to, up to 12 million over 20 years passed, then we're steering that ship properly. You wanna come in with your own money, knock yourself out, but we shouldn't be committing this money on speculation. We told Mr. Kaplan, up to 12 million dollars, over 20 years, when they come to the table, you might have a difference, um, we might have a different leg to debate from, but we don't. So I'm glad to see my motion.
To that point, Mayor Salsi?
Uh, yes, to that point, and, uh, again, I appreciate the debate. Um, what we did tell the minister was that we're talking about anticipated cost of the city's contribution to our downtown of about 36 million, and you heard, uh, that the fact is, we, we can't substantiate that 36, Mr., Mr. Chair. The, the fact is that 12 million evolved from the point that we thought we would look towards, uh, the federal and provincial governments for a third, third, third proposition. Uh, since that discussion, we've had a federal budget that identifies monies, uh, that, that are available for infrastructure, and we don't even know what programs federally may exist, plus there may be some new programs provincially. So what, what we're saying, in many respects, uh, Councilor Inoni is correct, we're not committing, um, money to a particular developer or investor, we're talking about a project that evolved in January of last year, uh, that some of our council went down to investigate. We heard a figure of 36 million dollars as a city's requirement towards capital contribution for improvements in our downtown sector that we would have to make, uh, for our own public space. And, uh, we, we had that discussion, that debate at that time. We have a proponent who is standing before us, uh, we aren't funding his project, we're funding a project according to a CIP and an SIP that we adopted and that we approved it by this council. So I think it's very, very premature to determine what amount we're talking about till we have the final EA completed. We don't know yet, and I think, again, I'm gonna ask you through our, our member of, our Director of Public Works, uh, with respect to the final cost, uh, Mr. Doolittle, we, do we have the, first of all, do we have the EA completed, and do we know what the final cost of the contribution for the city's public structure would be?
Through the Chair, we don't have a final EA completed, uh, for the eastern gateway, and, and, you know, they're looking at a number of options, they've narrowed it down, I think that one time they were looking at 12, they've narrowed it down to two or three. The Parks Commission has a preferred option, uh, that they would like to see go forth, um, but those, those, those final numbers aren't in yet. Uh, again, that all has to come to this council, uh, for vetting, so that, and to the public as to what the preferred options are, uh, and once that's completed and what, and what option we're gonna go forward with, then we can determine what the cost will be for, uh, for the eastern gateway work.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Doolittle. That's my point essentially, Mr. Chair, that the point is that we aren't doing this for one particular proponent. We may have several proponents who wish to, uh, do improvements in our downtown core. What I'm saying to you, if a council makes a decision now to eliminate something that's just, uh, just being allocated for the future for consideration of this council, it would be premature when we don't have the numbers. So my suggestion to you is, if you support our downtown revitalization, that's fine. There'll come a point when we have to make a decision, uh, around this table as to how much money we're going to spend. We're not at that point yet, and I think that council has, has made it clear, uh, that they may have, uh, some change of direction in respect of, of a, a financial commitment. I'd like to have an idea when I go to the federal and provincial government, that we're gonna spend X number of dollars, and we can actually lobby and ask for, uh, some assistance in that regard. So I think it's very premature at this point to make a decision with respect to, uh, a figure. The '08 and beyond is just an anticipation of how money could be allocated. It's as simply put as, as our CAO has said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other councillors that wish to speak, Councilor May?
Uh, no, my, my impression of this budget is that we were gonna pass 2007, and I'm looking at figures up to 2011. Um, I'm not so sure, uh, what I'm voting on here, because, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that any of 2008 and beyond are just projections of, of what we're planning to do in the future, it's, it's, it's just a guess, we don't have to spend this money. I think, uh, I was the one who seconded your motion on the, not spending the, we set up to 12 million. So I think as far as I'm concerned, I thought I was just gonna vote on 2007, of course, this is my first budget. So I thought I was just gonna vote on 2007, and the 2008 and beyond are just projections. So, um, I, I'm a little, uh, curious to know how I can obligate myself to things four and five years down the road, and, uh, I'm prepared to pass the 2007 budget, but I'm, I'm a little wary, but we're looking at down the road, and, and of course, this being my first year, my first budget, uh, perhaps I need some more clarification on what I'm voting on.
Okay, I think Mr. McDonald wants to speak to your comments.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. Uh, one, the, I should just remind council, or mention to council that we have had recent discussions with the downtown, uh, because they're very interested, obviously, in, in the report that we're doing. Uh, they did ask about the meeting tonight, and we, and they in fact asked, should they come and speak to it? Uh, staff, and maybe inappropriately, suggested that, um, because council had made a motion that the 12 million would be there, well, there's no commitment to spend it, it's unlikely the whole thing would be taken out, so, and not that that means anything in terms of your decision, I just mentioned that, but I just, to go back to maybe help, uh, uh, deal with this, uh, item, um, the way, and maybe it's confusing because it's broken down into '08 and beyond, and, and, uh, Councilor Inoni's correct, the motion was up to 12 million, and it, and I'm sure the intent was depending on what happens later. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, to make it clearer, uh, and again, to Councilor May's point, you know, while you approve a five-year budget, you're not, you're not making any commitment to spend anything beyond '07. But what we could do, uh, to, um, to sort of keep an indication that we're about to discuss the downtown, uh, sometime in the near future, take all the money from '08 to '11 out. Put it all in '11 as a total amount, and the total amount is actually about 12 million. Uh, put it all in '11, and all it does is, is, is a reminder in the capital budget that we're going to be dealing with the downtown development proposal. Uh, depending on what you decide later in '07, when you get to the '08 budget, then you can decide at that point where you wanna put it. So take it out of '08, '09, and '10, put it as, uh, to, uh, to '11, it's like a future date, and so you know you've had discussions on it, and at least you're still, uh, I think in that regard, you're still keeping with the motion you passed, up to 12 million. But clearly, and it would show there's been no plans to spend it any time in the near future, so you do it that way. The parking structure, I'll just clarify, is included in '11, but if you look at the revenue sources down below, that parking structure, uh, is not assumed to be coming from the city's money. Uh, it's, it's only on the assumption that there'd be other sources, we have provincial federal grants indicated for up to $23 million. So there's no indication we're gonna build a parking structure at this point, and again, this is a reflection of a possible plan, but as I, I'm just suggesting, in order to keep it in, so at least it allows the downtown group to come and, and make a presentation to you, and I'm talking about not one developer, but the whole BIA wishes to speak to you about it. If you put it off into 2011, at least it's listed, but there's actually no commitment to spend anything beyond '07 for it if you do it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilor May?
Could I ask if, uh, would that satisfy your motion, uh, Carol Inoni?
Councilor Inoni?
Thank you. You're, I mean, we're perfecting double speech here. If you're not going to spend it, what is it in the budget for? Don't tell me the downtown does not understand our commitment of our motion. Up to 12 million, over 20 years to the, following our CIP. We approved the CIP, we approved an SIP, we put our support, and that we even put money behind it. If you're telling me it, that you want it moved to 2011, but it doesn't mean you're gonna spend it. If it does, if you're not worried about whether we're gonna spend it or not, that's something another council could do, that's even in our town. So why would we put it on something we have no control over? I'm not amending my motion, we have no control over 2011, we don't even know if we'll be here.
I still have some speakers to the motion, I have Councilor Thompson that wishes to speak.
I, I, I really can't believe we're having this debate, this is a, is really a hook entry, all you have to do is go like that, and it's, uh, it's gone, and if you wanna put it in again the next day, you, you make a vote, then it's back in. So I don't know, I don't know what the problem is, except if you look around the table, everybody here had ads in the paper and everything else, we're not gonna spend any taxpayers' money downtown. So we had a debate, and we set up to 12 billion after that. So, uh, let's wait till we get the information, till we get a proponent that's going to tell us something that we're interested in hearing, and then we can deal with it. Why, why are we wasting our time discussing it? Take it out, it's not a problem, put it back in next week if, if, uh, something happens Put it back in next week if something happens to the public. I haven't heard anybody say there's a dance downtown being redeveloped. Let's get somebody who has a plan that we can deal with and that we can work with, and then we can figure out what kind of money. We got money in here. The plan that was proposed, in my opinion, hasn't got any chance of happening. High-rise development all over the place, down at the end of River Road, hotels and condominiums. Come on, what are we doing here? Take it out, and let's deal with it when we get something that's significant.
To the motion, I have councillor Fisher and councillor Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several concerns. First of all, I totally agree with you, totally agree with you, Carolyn. And furthermore, here we are preparing to recommend that we approve this budget even though it is only basics for 2011. No, thank you. Here we are, we've got in 2008, Road Comm. I agree with Road Comm, but that's $536,280. And yet we can't put a bridge on Morrison Street where we need it, and that's not scheduled until 2009? I'm sorry, what is the most biggest priority we have in this city? And yes, we all, we all talked about budget and keeping the taxes down. I look at this annual can debt payments. My gosh, I promised the people that I would be fiscally responsible. This is not being fiscally responsible. I don't want to deal with anything beyond this year. Whatever happens next year, that's up to us to look at it again, but I'm not dealing with anything beyond that. I don't care who puts what on paper and how much paperwork we have here. I looked through it all. It seems to me we're just regurgitating all the information and trying to keep it. So, I don't understand it, but I do a lot of bookwork, so I do understand what I'm talking about. I will not vote beyond 2007.
Can I have councillor Wayne for the motion, please?
Yes, about up to 12 million that we approved, up to 12 million over 20 years. As I understand it, was to include all the money that had already been spent and is being spent now. It's not put 12 million in for 2011. It's include all of the money that we have spent on the downtown so far. And ever since that SIP came in, I've been criticizing it, and I can tell you right now, I have not changed my mind. It is not worth the paper it's printed on. It's a piece of garbage.
Okay, councillor Kerry, you have the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not changing my position on the downtown. I still support the revitalization of the downtown, but I'm going to support Alderman Iainoni's motion for this reason only. I think it's about time that this council sent a signal that we're not going to put the money in first and have our question answered last. The last council was prepared to put money in first and not get our questions answered. I think this sends a good signal that answer our questions, and we may put the money back. If our questions aren't answered, and the developer doesn't come to the table and tell us exactly what he's going to do and how he's going to do it, and get the agreements done the way our staff has asked them, and get back to doing it the way this council wants it done, we won't put the money back.
Last but not least, councillor Diodati.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just unfortunate. It seems like the opinions seem to be polarizing. Everybody's digging in. It's becoming a for downtown or against downtown. And I think the debate that happened during the last election wasn't if you were for it or against it. It was, did you support spending 36 million, putting that on the books or not? So, this council unanimously agreed that we would commit up to 12 million dollars. I mean, anybody that's had a budget knows, you don't plan for one year in advance, you plan for five, 10, 20 years in advance. For us to treat this anything other than a big business is absolutely ridiculous. I think the message that we send is that we're not open for business by doing these kinds of things. We want our, it was our SIP, it was our CIP. If somebody, if anybody in this room doesn't like the developer that's come to the table, that's fine, but don't be against downtown. Don't be against your city. As far as I'm concerned, I support the downtown. We unanimously agreed up to 12 million dollars. We want to leave some bait on the hook. We're not committed to one developer or any other developer. We're committed to the city, and this is becoming a personal issue, and I think it's wrong. And I think we have to work together, and we just have to forget who's at the table or who's going to be coming to the table, and realize we want to bring as many to the table as possible. And the way you do that is you show, you don't just say your commitment, you show your commitment. You don't just think it, you show it. And as far as I'm concerned, putting it in a budget of projections of capital expenditures is nothing less than responsible. I mean, as far as borrowing goes, this is the time to borrow. It's a healthy environment for borrowing. The timing is great. It's an opportune time for us to invest in the city. And if you don't lay out your cards and plan out your expenses, you're not going to be prepared. And as they say, plan your work, work your plan. We can't do that one year at a time. It just doesn't work. So, I will not be able to support the motion.
Thank you. I think we've had everyone around the table speak at this point. I'd like to take the motion. I have two more people that have asked to speak, Mayor Salsi and councillor Iainoni. So, Mayor Salsi.
Thank you for your indulgence, and we all have spoken once or I spoke a few times. A budget is a budget is a budget. We are being fiscally responsible by dealing with the future and having some idea where we're going to be heading. Councillor Diodati understands that very well, and his comments are well made, and I respect that, and not because he's supporting the downtown, but because of his understanding of what we're doing. We had to identify, we did the SIP and the CIP for ourselves, for our city. We're saying to the downtown BIA, we're telling downtown business owners what we're prepared to do to revitalize the downtown. We're not directing this SIP and that CIP at one particular individual. As I said before, we have one proponent before us. We may have several proponents before us. So, just to reiterate the point, we're not being asked in this capital budget to make a determination beyond '07. And the issue before us is, if you're talking about downtown, there'll be a time to debate the downtown. When the CIP, oh, sorry, when the environmental assessment is complete and the marketing study is complete, they can come back to us and tell us what, the status of staff that is, what costs we're looking at for the public investment that we have to make in our downtown core, not in any individual developer. So, please keep that in mind. So, I appreciate the forbearance. This is not about downtown right now. It's about a budget, setting a budget and priorities that we may change beyond '07, and I think that's the issue. I can tell you, I have to have something to go to the federal and provincial government with, and if we say we have nothing till 2012, then what can we ask them for? At one point, we asked, we thought our figure would be about $36 million for capital improvements downtown. When we present that figure, if that's the figure, so the government today can say, then what are you asking us for? Well, I'm asking for a third here from the federal, a third here from the provincial government. That's where we end up at the 12 million dollars. My understanding was this council, we had a very clear understanding, was this council was prepared to invest up to 12 million dollars in our downtown for our purpose, not for anybody else's, once the final information in the marketing study came forward. We still do not have the information, and it's premature at this point to make a decision. So, I appreciate, again, you're allowing me to make another comment, and I'd like to have recorded vote, please.
Okay. I have councillor Iainoni that wishes to speak, and before you do, the chair has the motion written as council take monies identified for the downtown CIP out of the capital budget.
First of all, it's the SIP.
The SIP.
And anything passed 2007 that wasn't already approved, because you do have a council motion from last year that started you on the track that you're already on, and you've spent money. So, realistically, we dealt with that, but I mean, if the residents' heads are spinning, I have to tell them, so is ours. When I have a debate on the downtown, I thought we had that debate. I thought this council had that debate. So, I'm not entering into another debate that we've already had. And councillor Diodati says it's become us against the downtown. Well, I have a news flash for anybody downtown watching this. That's what happened through the election. It was never us against the downtown, and until Mr. Lichtman drew first blood, it was never us against Mr. Lichtman either. We asked for information for a year. We didn't get it. This is starting to feel like I'm back a year ago. The debate's been had. And by the way, the motion passed was up to 12 million over 20 years at an affordable rate. To me, this is not an affordable rate. If we're going to talk about getting in an adventure situation for an arena that I've been, I don't know if anybody else has, but I've been commended all over town for the fact that we're building a foreplex. Councillor Thompson points out the adventure we're doing for unanimous vote to build the foreplex. We're committing, we're doing exactly what we did in our strategic plan in the beginning of this year. We're fulfilling projects for the residents. This was not for the residents. This was for the developer, and that's what got confused the entire year. That debate was before this council, whether it was our CIP or for the developer. This council has 12 million reasons to be proud of our support for the downtown. I'm standing by that. Direct your phone calls to Carolyn Iainoni tomorrow if you don't, you know, believe different, but we've had that debate.
The motion on the floor is to take any monies passed 2007 not previously approved and identified for the downtown CIP out of the capital budget. Mr. Arifita, please.
Well put. Alderman Diodati.
Yes.
Alderman Fisher.
Yes.
Alderman Iainoni.
Yes.
Alderman Kerry.
Yes.
Alderman Mays.
Yes.
Alderman Peter Ansel.
In favor.
Alderman council. For. Alderman Way.
In favor.
Mayor Salsi.
Agreed.
Kerry.
Okay, moving on with the rest of the discussion then on the capital budget. You still have the floor, Alderman Iainoni.
Thank you. I'd like to go to the Millennium Trail under the name of the first amendment. This town, the last town also passed and approved the Millennium Trail completion of Morrison, River Road. I mean, I'm asked all the time, how can it happen to be started? And it's starting charging late, I think, I'm going to press it. What is this budget? Again, I'll use that analogy that the people out there watching us pass a five-year plan believe that we're actually going to do what we passed in a five-year budget. So, the Millennium Trail here, it made Ms. Morrissey correctly. She said Section 3 former approved in 2006. Well, when is that trail going to be used for the residents approved in 2006? Because to me, reading this budget, it looks that it won't be till 2008.
Okay, I'll ask Ms. Morrissey to respond.
Traditionally, in the year that you pass the budget, most of the capital projects are initiated in the following original processes. With that particular link of the trail, we have encountered a number of challenges because of the cleaning of the site, the site assessment of it. The latest challenge that we're having is because of the bridges that cross over adjacent to the Fairview Cemetery. They're structurally challenged. There's being assessments from CN. Until those assessments are completed, there's literally no advantage to laying the asphalt and the trail, only to have heavy equipment go in and look at those trails being eaten up literally and replaced. So, that's been some of the delays that we've experienced, and we understand the timing. We are hoping, though with consultation with OPG, Hydro One, and now CN, that at least by September, we'll be able to start laying some asphalt and have our trails functional, if not the late fall 2007, but hopefully early spring 2008. But just to clarify, most of the capital budgets that you're approving for Parks and Rec, traditionally, if you're approving them in, say, January or February of that fiscal, we're traditionally starting that work sometime in September or October of that fiscal, if we're lucky, for opening in the following fiscal year. So, hopefully that clarifies the question of the councillor.
Councillor Iainoni. Okay. In that case, then I have councillor Fisher, councillor Wing, and councillor Thompson on my list. If I'm councillor Wing, please. No? Okay. Other comments on the capital budget, then councillor Thompson.
I have several questions, Mr. Chair. I was through you to do a bit. The design Murray Street pedestrian bridge, Page 45, what is that?
Through you, worship, uh, through the chair, sorry. It's an accounting issue. That was done by two private funding partners, FNC and the Skyline. They paid for that, and it's just showing that other sources are going to fund that, so we're just closing up accounts, so this is more paperwork. The bridge is already up, and they were just doing the final accounting on that.
Murray Street?
Yeah, the pedestrian bridge.
The Skyline.
Yeah, between the Skyline.
Down Murray Street cul-de-sac.
That is to finish off the cul-de-sac in the Stanley Avenue Business Park that's been going on for a number of years. The project, we've set aside some dollars. We've had some issues with property and dealing with some of the property owners at the end there, but it's to provide a proper turnaround for the trucks at the end there because they've been driving onto private property.
Dixon Street cul-de-sac, where is that going to be on Dixon Street?
That's for the closures that we've done as part of the EA for the main street and carrying out the proper closures there.
How does that affect the parking lot there?
It'll take into account all the concerns raised by Mr. Rudan there.
Beyond the...
We're waiting on for him to finish off some of the planning work that he was trying to do in that area, but we will be consulting with him before the work actually goes ahead.
Okay, and you're planning to do that this year?
If, if everything falls into place.
Okay. Grand Boulevard, what are we doing there?
Well, we're still waiting on it. Again, it's one of these projects that is identified in our planning documents, and again, it's a forecast. We're waiting on, finally, to go ahead on that project, but again, it's one of these ones that's identified in our forecasting for proposed projects.
Okay, but you got $50,000 in 2007. What does that mean?
That's just for design work. We haven't even started any detailed design.
Kind of a design. I thought we were kind of wondering whether that was going to happen or not.
And until we make a final determination on that, we still show it as a potential project. If this council decides that we're not going to do the Grand Boulevard, then that project will disappear.
But it's in 2007, that's...
Again, that expenditure and hiring someone to do detailed designs will come to this council.
Page 68, is Robert Street 420, is that just finishing off?
Absolutely. All the work is done there, it's just finishing off. The money's there, they just have to close out the account.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have councillor Kerry that wishes to speak, please? And councillor Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page 119, what other work are we doing at the community center? We show money in $2 million in 2007, a million in 2008, $502,000, $55,210. Could you tell me what are we doing exactly with that?
I'll ask Ms. Morrissey to respond.
Through the chair. The current project which you approved in last year's capital budget, and it's continuing, is the development of the community center park. It's a large endeavor. It includes a fully handicap accessible playground, a fully handicap accessible splash pad, outdoor washrooms, a pavilion-like amphitheater for programming and education, a landscaped area, and that's the project in terms of the park concept that flowed out of the original McBain Center as the next phase of the development. The third phase will be the trail linkages that will be around the perimeter of our building property to ensure recreational walking opportunities. Most of the detail, if you'd like more, certainly more than happy to forward it to you, councillor.
Okay. I have councillor Mays.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. One is Niagara Transit, don't see anything beyond 2008. Is the fleet that up to date, that they bought all those new buses, are they in great shape?
I'll ask Mr. Doolittle to respond.
Through the chair, what we plan on doing this year, included in the budget, is to do a business plan for Niagara Transit, which will then forecast what we see as expenditures for the next five years and what we need to do with the fleet and all that. All we know in certainty is the two new buses that we're buying this year, but there'll be more information coming forward through this council with respect to what needs to be done with respect to the fleet Niagara Transit in coming years. So, that's the only certainty we know for now, and once we get more information on it, there'll be more information forthcoming.
Thank you. There was a five-year plan to replace two buses a year. Has that been fulfilled?
This is the last year of it. Eight buses have been purchased, and we're waiting two more to fulfill that commitment. And now it's time to relook at what we're going to do in the years to come, especially with new funding that's being announced regularly both at provincial and federal level. There are more dollars available to transit and providing transit to the public, so we're going to relook at the funding available and adjust our plans and create the plans accordingly for the next five years.
The other question, with the new arena, I'm looking at the interest expenses and whatnot. I'm just assuming that some of the reduced costs, operating costs, will offset some of that interest. Is that correct, Mr. McDonald?
Yep, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, Mr. Chair, correct. We're looking at close to $800,000 to help us with that particular segment.
I have councillor Diodati, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question, Patrick Cummings, I'm sorry, Highway 420, I guess, through you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Doolittle. Well, it's 68, I guess, TAB 3. What's that? Oh, Denise. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It says municipal works still, so, well, we've got one on the municipal works. You've got Robert Street 420. I don't know, that's what I was trying to do. You've got a million dollars.
Sorry, yeah, that was, as councillor Thompson asked before, that's just a paperwork entry. That work's long done. That's the Robert Street Gateway Project.
Okay.
So, they just need to close out that account. So, there's no work that we're talking, that's the section between Victoria Avenue and Stanley Avenue.
Okay, so then if I could direct that to Ms. Morrissey, through you, Mr. Chair, the Highway 420 median enhancement, so what do we have planned?
Through the chair, and follow up to your request of previous, so we had some initial, and these are very basic costs, to beautify that in some capacity at $210, or sorry, $210,000. We're still looking at the impacts of total beautification of that, whether it's artificial or a mix. The critical issue that we do have, though, is still going to be maintenance in the long term, so we've been very conservative. We're not sure if 210 would capture, given the linear number of meters that we would have to landscape. We'll certainly be back with more detail once we have that, but it will be, I think, a much more expensive endeavor, and then the long-term maintenance access on a 400-series highway are also going to be a real challenge for us. So we'll certainly get back to you, but that's where we put it in 2008 at this point, because it's a bit of a cumbersome and very comprehensive review that we're undertaking.
Okay. I have councillor Salsey that wishes to speak.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to that point, councillor Diodati has expressed concern in the past. I've had a number of discussions with the minister, and she, as recently as about two weeks ago we met, and had discussion at a function that we both attended. She's been very supportive, and there is an initiative coming forward that we hope we can take advantage of for the area west of Stanley Avenue to Dorchester Road. And we're hoping that we could get into some kind of a, an arrangement where we'd be allowed to either sell for revenue the rights to advertise, let's say, ground signs like you see along the Gardner Expressway on your way to Toronto. And I proposed that to the minister, and she said yes very much, so that's what they're thinking of doing. We have a very particular concern in keeping that area much more enhanced and much more beautified than it currently exists. Last year, as you know, we were able to finally get the median redone with the stone face and the fabric below that. And of course, I understand that councillor Diodati's, and I've been watching, his concern last year was that we'll be seeing weeds starting to grow, and we have some little green areas popping up now as we speak, and I'm watching that very closely. But on a number of occasions, I've said to the minister that we have to deal with that, and she's driven by there a number of times and she's aware of it. She's offered to meet with us on a quarterly basis, and there's been a change in direction in the maintenance policy of the MTO. And that's why we're being faced, as our director of public parks has said, that we're going to be facing the challenge of the maintenance of that area. When the design work was done initially, the municipality wasn't consulted, to the best of my knowledge, and that work was just done. And the construction of the median has been, become now more of an issue on maintenance factors. You know, to service the median, you have to shut down the laneway. And if you have grass there, how often do you shut down that laneway along the 420 and along the Queen E? So that's really very awkward for us. So we're hoping to have some way of beautifying. Last year, the council director that we go to, some of the BIAs, and I asked the BIAs in particular, the Lundy Lane BIA, if they were interested in supporting the beautification of that area, and they denied the request because they felt that they wanted to concentrate their money on Lundy's Lane, rightly so. So we don't have any particular group that would do it locally, we may have to do it